Call the November fifteenth Common Council meeting to order. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor Olson.
Here.
Alderman Holber.
Here.
Alderwoman Eichman.
Here.
Alderwoman Wilhelm.
Here.
Alderwoman Hanneman.
Here.
Alderman Barber.
Hi.
Here.
Alderman Nelson.
Here.
Reverend Corrin, please rise and join the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and
Before we get started, I want to take the moment to introduce the smiling face sitting next to me is our new city clerk, Director of Clerk Services, Karen Castinson. Karen comes to us from the city of South Milwaukee. Twenty-one years of experience in the business. We look forward to having her fill the shoes of Sandy, but I'm sure she's going to make a mark on this city that we'll very much appreciate. So, welcome Karen. Also, I heard today that a good friend of ours, Tim Solomon, has passed away, former alderman, member of the Community Development Authority, Library Board Member. So, if you all join me for a moment of silence for Alderman Solomon. Thank you very much. Tim would have said that's way too long. Okay, with that, first item on the agenda is citizens' comment period. Any citizen wishing to speak, please rise, come forward, give us your name and address. Hold it to three minutes if you could. St. Louis, thirty-one ten West Minnesota Avenue. Two, I've got to bring up a couple of things. One, the property viewer, the city of Franklin property viewer, when you click on it, you know, and you can see people's properties and you can drill down into them and all that stuff. I noticed, and I went to your, you know, people here in the assessor's office, excuse me, and the, when you drill down into it, and some of the properties that I looked at, they don't have the right zoning, which is an issue. And in the office, they had to go and look into the county property viewer to see that it said it was residential, and it was supposed to be institutional, and it had both of those in the county, and it didn't in the city of Franklin one. And I know that it's been updated recently, and there are some issues with that. So, just to bring it up to you, the second thing I got to bring up is kind of a lack of transparency on some of these projects. Now, like I said, I live on thirty, Minnesota Avenue, and then right around Thirty First Street Northwestern, and they put two big ponds on that property this year. And it's a little unnerving when you wake up in the morning and you see them offloading huge earth movers and, you know, equipment to remove big trees. You don't really know what's going on. So, you know, that was inner, but a project or whatever for MMSD or something like that. There's another creek enhancement. I see it's number six on the agenda here, and we need a little more input. You know, that's taken a lot of taxpayers' money to straighten a creek. I understand it's like eight hundred and fifty feet of it. I don't really understand, but there are mature trees back there and stuff, and it's a lot of taxpayers' dollars going for that. So, I think, you know, there should be a lot more transparency going forward. Thank you.
Mr. St. Louis, can you, do you happen to remember what, and offline, can you get us the addresses of those properties that were incorrectly zoned?
Actually, I, I told Kristen about it, so she should be able to without.
Thank you. Anybody else? Yes, sir. Good evening.
James Capelman, South Thirty-Fifth Street. I've got a few questions, actually. I'd like to know who designed this creek project, this creek movement project, relocation project, rerouting project? Who, who, who designed that?
Seems to be a lot of rumors going around. There is no project design yet. The company that's doing it is the Root Pike Win Group, who does this kind of thing, but there is no design yet.
Is, is that a private corporation, for-profit, not-for-profit?
Not-for-profit.
All right. I mean, this isn't the first time that the city has tried to slide something by the people in the creek neighborhood. That would include Thirty-Fifth Street and Thirty-First Street, south of Ross.
Could you help me, tell me what the other thing we slid?
Well, there was, there was a lot of, there was a lot of smoke and mirrors over the tid thing or the tip thing years ago. There was this water main project a year or so ago that most of us didn't know anything about. Nothing was conveyed to us. So, it's the same here. Now, I understand that, that this, this grant proposal was passed, what, back in April? Well, it's important because here it is seven months later, and we're just finding out about it.
Here again, if there's no plan, there's nothing to tell you about.
Well, there's always a plan if there's a proposal.
That's not correct. There's a problem.
There's always.
It's after the prob.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
So, no, sir, it's your turn.
Who, who is supposed to pay for, for this project?
Again, there is no plan, and there is no project. It's anticipated that MMSD will pay for it.
MMSD, okay.
Mr. Moore.
Is, isn't, isn't most of this work being done on NML property?
It's all being done on NML property.
Why aren't they paying for it?
Because they didn't ask for it.
Well, a year or so ago, when you wanted to run a water main down our street, we were going to have to pay for it. I think my share would have been thirteen grand. That's a working-class neighborhood. These people all work for a living, or they retired from working for a living. And I'm talking, talking, working, working in blue collar and gray collar and maybe a few white-collar jobs. So, slapping ten, twelve, thirteen thousand dollars on a homeowner for something that they don't even need because most of us are on well water, and we love our well water. This is what I'm getting at, which brings up another question. Let's say this becomes a project. All right, who's going to pay for all of that?
I think I just told you.
Well, you told me who's going to pay for the study. You didn't tell me who's going to pay for the project, because I'm assuming there is no project.
Correct.
All right.
Answer though, MMSD.
All right.
Well, Mr. Moore.
So, first of all, right now, it's just a concept. The idea is that there is an unstable creek that's eroding the banks and potentially could damage Third, South Thirty-Fifth Street. Having said that, we, I say we, in February, Common Council discussed asking Root Pike Win to go seek some grants to do something. And so, they came up with some ideas, and right now, they're just concepts. Looks like they may or may not have a, a grant from, I believe it's National Fish and Wildlife, throwing some money at it. Could potentially save money, throw some money at it. It hasn't been decided yet. There's some concepts, but the first thing they do is hire a consultant who knows what they're talking about. They would come in and look at it. They don't want to get rid of all the trees. They don't want to do all those kinds of things. They'd like to do some sort of natural stabilization, basically so that creek can dissipate its energy without being so destructive as it currently is. In the process of, we might use some MMSD monies. They can't be used for the channel alignment, but they could be used for some other green things. There's, there's special monies specifically for it, and they call it the green, green money. This was what we're using for. So, there is no project per se. We don't know what we're doing. The first thing we would do is we'd hire a consultant, we'd come in, probably talk to neighbors, talk Northwestern Mutual, try to decide the best way to do something, take all of your input together. They would try to do a tree inventory, plan inventory. Again, the consultants who are, who specialize in creek migration, you know, could, could figure out how to dissipate that energy. Back in the day, they would just throw concrete channels in and call it good. We don't want to do that. We want to take something nice and natural. Northwestern Mutual, I like the idea of doing something nice and natural. And again, it could be helpful for Thirty-Fifth Street as, as a byproduct. So, it, it's improper when people say that there is a plan, because we don't have a plan. That's, that's what this, the first step would be, is to figure out what the issue is, and it would involve public meetings and so forth. And right now, it's, it's so early in the process, it's, it's purely just a concept that we want to fix the creek, so it's not so destructive.
Okay.
This is citizen comment period, and the engineer is allowed to make comments about a project, but the alderman cannot make comments about a project. And I don't feel it's appropriate. I appreciate the questions. I think it would be more appropriate if we either have this discussion on G six and allow the citizens to make their comments without being interrupted. And if we don't get the questions, or if they can't stay for G six, we can get back with them with the questions. But we have a long night ahead of us, and I don't want information to be said about one thing and have it not be able to have any feedback about what's being said to you. So, it's, it's not.
Well, I'm just concerned, I'm concerned about transparency.
Everybody, everybody.
And money.
This is citizens' comment period. We afford a citizen three minutes. We're well past that. We've got a, a, a call for the point of order. So, if we're going to do points of order, then we're going to do points of order. So, this is a business meeting. So, this is, G six is an update. So, we will give information, but it's not intended for back and forth. That's a public hearing. So, so let's, let's move on now. Anyone else wishing to speak? Three minutes? Sir, please.
I'm going to read a prepared statement. Some of the questions have already been answered. So, anyways, dear common council members, regarding the east branch of the Root River Stream and Wetland Restoration, oh, I'm sorry, Stephen Fighter, South Thirty-Fifth Street, seven-two-five-oh. Council, start over. Dear common council members, regarding the east branch of the Root River Stream and Wetland Restoration Project, this should not be considered a minor amendment. Earlier this year, another project was deemed to be a minor amendment, where in effect, two lakes were built on a large piece of land along the west side of Thirty-First Street between seventy-three-hundred south to approximately seventy-five-hundred south. That project involved clearcutting a field which contained many mature native trees. I'm given to understand that project never came before elected officials. I don't consider that had been a might, I don't consider that to have been a minor amendment, and I certainly don't consider the stream and restoration project to be one either. I feel the common council needs to understand and get to know this project ahead of its implementation, so it becomes seen in the public domain before it goes to the planning stage. I feel neighborhood meetings need to be held regarding it as it will impact the entire neighborhood. Heaven forbid this project would entail clearcutting of these woods, in effect, a miniature forest, many of the trees in which are probably well over a hundred years old. I know this is an age-old argument when development of natural areas is threatened, but I feel it would be an awful thing to clearcut these woods. Even thinning out the trees would not be something conducive to nature. If the gist of this river relocation project is ostensibly to control flooding into the floodplain along the east branch of the Root River, why not increase the radius of the turn in the river where it turns in a sharp right angle from a north-south direction to an east-west direction? Would that not have the same effect? Please reconsider, or at least modify this project to protect the natural environment. Thanks for your time.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Miss Kent, good evening.
Good evening. Dana Gin, nine-zero-one-one West Hawthorne Lane. I have a couple of comments. Item five is the UDO. It discusses public engagement, and there's a UDO diagnosis. And anyway, so there's supposed to be public meetings on September eighth and September twenty-first. Those meetings do not allow public comment, so I don't know how the city can classify that there's public engagement when there's no public comment involved in this re, rewriting of the universe, the UDO. It's very concerning to me that the, something of this magnitude regarding the ordinances that impact all citizens in the city of Franklin, that there's no public input. I believe that that item should be tabled. You guys have five hundred pages on your agenda packet this evening, including the budget and two-hundred-and-ninety pages of other items that I think that this item should be tabled for, for the discussion or placed on the committee of the whole, so there can be more engagement and further review by the common council members and the committee of the whole. The purpose of the UDO, UDO is to promote the health, safety, morals, and prosperity and aesthetics and general welfare of the city citizens. Obviously, the Rock Sports Complex needs to have some sort of regulation regarding design standards. There's no design standards in the city of Franklin regarding outdoor acoustic systems. There's twenty-six pages about signs, twenty pages about outdoor lighting. Obviously, outdoor acoustics is of utmost importance to people within two miles of the Rock Sports Complex that have been disrupted for nine years, and that should be of concern to everyone that if they don't include something like that in the ordinance, you might have something like that in your yard, in your backyard, and have to tolerate it. And the comment about lack of transparency, I can tell you right now that there's a berm between this development and the residential district. It used to be a ten-foot berm. Supposedly, this was a minor grade change to remove the ten-foot berm. So, there is no buffer zone between a residential district and an entertainment district. So, that's, that's one example of lack of transparency. And in additional, the comment about resource protection, there are over a thousand eight-inch diameter trees removed for the Rock Sports Complex and all the wetlands. So, obviously, the concern is there is not a lot of protection going on in the city of Franklin for natural resources. I see item number six, that there is a neighborhood meeting regarding some project on Thirty-Fifth Street, and I want to ask that there is a neighborhood meeting for all the citizens around the Rock Sports Complex. We've been tolerating the noise intrusion into our homes for four to five hours a day for hundreds of events for the last nine years, and we have been complaining and pleading for help for nine years, and nothing has happened. So, I'm asking for a neighborhood meeting regarding that. So, I'd appreciate that. And I, the neighborhood submitted a letter. I don't know if you had a chance to read it with your giant packet, and if you even received it, regarding our concerns with the UDO, that it needs to include acoustic systems in your design standard, and that the noise at this facility needs to be mitigated to protect the citizens, which is your job. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Kent. Anyone else?
Yeah, yeah, I'll do it. Gabe Nichols, seven-three-zero-five, South Thirty-Fifth Street. He's been here damn near twenty years. And, you know, a lot of the questions were already asked, but I want to know why it took so long for me to get information, why it took so long for our alderwoman to get the information about this grant. My son is up here to keep me from him having to do his job, because I am livid. I ain't kidding. Paperwork and me don't get along. It's like putting water on a duck's ass. It ain't going to work. But you want somebody angry, somebody to fight? Give me a call. I'll do it. When I get aggravated, I get extremely loud, right? I know everybody's going to come up here and just talk really tough, and Michael, no, I want to stand up. I want to yell. I want people to know what you're trying to do. You, you, you say you're not going to move any trees. You say you're not going to move the creek, right? But I got a copy of the grant that says different. Right? How do you explain putting in two lakes that's not even on that grant? I mean, there's a lot of questions. Three minutes ain't going to cover it. So, we're going to have our town meeting. And I want to get my neighbors together without anybody here, and I want to put a list together of why leave it alone. It's been there fifty years. It never flooded, maybe once, but if there was a tree that fell across the creek or something, guess who went and took care of the dam? Yes, I was trespassing. Arrest me. But we stopped the creek from flooding. It's all you got to do. There's a tree down in there now. Who's going to go in there and take that out, so it doesn't flood? Even after this whole proposal of moving the creek, that when I talked to the DNR a couple of weeks ago, they can't move the creek. I said, well, they're going to try. He said, if they, you see one bulldozer, one backhoe, something, you give me a call. I said, I will do that. This guy at the DNR was very helpful. Now, I know the DNR is in on this grant, EPA. I talked to the EPA. I talked to the DNR. I talked to, I talked to people. I didn't know who the hell I talked to anymore, but they're all saying they can't move the creek. It's natural. There is no existing river bottom in there, and in order for them to do what they want to do, they're going to have to dig down twenty feet.
Mr. Nichols.
You tell me my three minutes is up, buddy. I'll send my son right up here, and he can complete this. I'm taking my son's three minutes, too.
We can't do that.
Yes, you can.
Your, sir, your three minutes are up. If your son wants to talk, that's fine.
What, what is three minutes? Can I have somebody else's three minutes?
You can have your son's three minutes.
There we go. Yeah. This is what I'm talking about.
I'm sorry.
For years, for years, you have been trying to mess with that street.
Mr. Nichols.
That creek. I'll step away from Michael, but I'm still going to be heard. My God-given right. It's an amendment, isn't it?
No.
It be heard. No, right?
Mr. Nick.
Read him a speech, but.
Mr. Nichols.
Kick me out. I don't care. I'm going to be heard.
You're upset about something that's not even a plan?
Bullshit. What your problem? I will leave right now.
Chief, I, I don't, I don't mind people arguing with me, but we don't call names here. Please.
Did I call you a name? No, I told you you were full of something.
That's inappropriate for a public meeting.
Well, it's on record. I want the people to know what the hell's going on. I will leave. My time is up.
You don't have to leave.
I'm leaving.
Have a seat.
Believe me, buddy, you want me to leave. Otherwise, he's going to work extra hard. He's here to keep me from doing that.
You see, folks.
Have a good night.
Thank you, Mr. Nichols. Yes, ma'am. Your name and address.
Diane Sokorsky, seventy-two-twenty, South Thirty-Fifth. We, so the problems with the street, what exactly are the problems with the street? I'd kind of like to know that. You can see that there's some issues. Okay. Well, that doesn't really help. So, I'm interested in kind of knowing what, there probably is some subsidence or something in the street, right? Where the creek does cut very close. It always has. We've been there for forty years. So, repairing the street might be something that has to happen, would be a lot less expensive than rerouting the creek, I would think. And, but, but we, what we're all concerned about is that we kind of know that something's in the works that's being talked about before final decisions are really made. Because as we all know, once the decisions are made and all the studies are in and all of that, there's nothing we can do. You know, no input from us is really going to matter at that point. So, we want to be in on kind of what the plan is, what you guys are thinking of, and what the reasons are. You know, so, and also, rather than rerouting the creek, how about if we just had a little regular maintenance there every three, four years? Because we have actually talked to people in years past about after storms, a lot of stuff floats downstream, and we have all kinds of crap, you know, the creek goes right through our backyard. So, we have all kinds of stuff washing up and then going downstream and getting, oh, my God, I'm on TV. Oh, that was weird. Oh, so, but, you know, trees come down and they make dams, and they, you know. So, I'd hate to see our wood ducks and the great blue herons, green herons I've seen out there. We've had kingfishers along the creek. Oh, that's a lot of, and mink. I saw a mink once. So, we're concerned that maybe maintenance, clearing out some of the log jams to allow it to flow better might work just as well, be less expensive and less disruptive. Thank you very much.
I will tell you, December the seventh, the meeting was set on, on November eighth. Between your alderman, the city engineer, I had a voice in it, and a couple of the constituents, your neighbors had a voice in. December the seventh will be the public meeting. It's not a hearing. It's a public meeting. You sit around the room, you get a presentation, and then you talk about it. Perfect. And none of us want to tear down all these trees. None of us want to do anything that's not necessary. So, you know, what we saw this evening is totally unnecessary. So, who else would like to speak? Yes, sir. Good evening. I'll remind you, give us your name and address, please.
Larry Tom, seventy-one-twenty-four, South Thirty-Fifth. I also own the house. It's down right where, right where the creek comes right up along the road. I lived there for seventy years. I'm still living in the same house. The only two years I wasn't there is when I was in the service. Anyway, we used to play in that creek when we were kids. It used to be real clean. There was fish and everything in there. Now, there's nothing in there, because all the way up through Greenfield and Milwaukee, everything from the roads and all the stores, from the parking lots, run into that creek. The runoff from the gas from the cars that drip in the parking lots, the salt, and there's nothing hardly living in there. Once in a while, you'll see a beaver come through. You'll see some mink or muskrat, and we, I went to a meeting when they were putting Rossin through. I think that was nineteen ninety-eight. The county bought Mrs. Malod out on one side of Rossin and Mr. Gas next to our house. And at that time, we says they were going to move the, put a new bridge in. We says move the bridge over three hundred feet east and put the creek straight behind the lot, right along the lot line of all the houses along Thirty-Fifth Street. DNR says we can't do that because the creek's got to be natural. It's the low land there. It's kind of marshy and everything, and the vegetation, everything. Within a day or two, everything recedes the creek because of that. And our old engineer, Mr. Bennett, he says he had a program years ago talking about creeks and rivers, how they paved them. He says that even DNR admits paving them is no good. All you're doing is having rushing water through there and a hazard for kids. As you've seen this spring over there on Twenty-seventh, approximately Morgan, where that little kid drowned and his uncle and another guy drowned trying to find him. Well, anyway, that's what's going to happen with this creek. DNR says if we move the creek back, the land, layer of land is higher. It's going to be a big ditch through solid clay. And there ain't going to be no seepage, and you're going to have more flooding than you ever had. And we laid the creek the way it is. It's been that way for hundreds of years. It recedes. And for the seventy years I lived there, I was always told that that was a hundred-year, hundred-year flood zone. And while I lived there, I seen it flood twice. And it recedes real quick now, and they screwed up our yard there on Seventh, on the corner of Thirty-Fifth and Rossin. There used to be deep ditches there. The old road used to be level with our, top of our basement of the house, the floor. And they went and did away with all the deep ditches. They put a twelve-inch pipe through there with two little They put a twelve inch pipe through there with two little grates there on Rossin Avenue that goes into the creek. All the storm water from Rossin and Twenty-seventh, everything runs into that creek now, adding more water to it. And when the early spring, when we get a flood, if it's a fast thaw, the water backs up through that twelve inch pipe and comes bubbling out of them two little grates.
And then it.
On that note.
And then it goes.
Interrupt you, but your time's passed up. But thank you. December the seventh is a good time to bring all of that up. Anyone else? That's the rule set by the common council. Sam.
Good evening. Diamond Topless, seven-one, seven-one, South Thirty-Fifth. I don't want to go over the same stuff that all the neighbors have said already and waste time or anything like that. I'm I understand business is business with some sort of stuff, but my thing is, like Diane said, maybe some maintenance. And instead of going through, spending all this money and stuff like that, like there's some of us that have little kids in that area. We have no streetlights. Um, we appreciate the police very much. But we don't see them as often as we'd like to see them because we see a lot of different kind of people driving down and going to that playground that's over there. And to be quite honest with you, I know that this has nothing to do with the creek. But um if we can get some, you know, uh, what do you call it? Some supervision at least, so we feel a little bit safer, too. And street lights would help. The creek, I walk up and down that street with my wife and my kids all the time. I've never seen a problem with that creek fifteen years ago. So thank you for your time. Have a nice evening.
Thank you, Sam. Good to see you. Anybody else? Anybody else? Yes, ma'am. Good evening.
June Duffy, seventy-three, forty-one, South Thirty-Fifth Street. Again, I am concerned also with the woods and the project going on on Thirty-Fifth Street with the woods across the street and the street that evidently is close to the road on Thirty-Fifth and Madison. Evidently, there's a problem with the roadbed there. If there's just a problem at Thirty-Fifth and Madison, I do not understand why there's a bigger project to do anything else with the woods or moving the creek or anything like that. I have walked up and down that street for over forty years. I don't see any problems with the roadbed. If there is a problem at Thirty-Fifth and Madison, yes, it should be addressed. But why not just at that intersection and not destroy the woods and the stream and do everything else along our street? Destroy what a wonderful neighborhood we have. Thank you.
Thank you. Good to see you in person. Anyone else? Don't dawdle, folks.
Yes, sir. Good evening.
John Knight, seventy-three, forty-one, South Thirty-Fifth. Same topic as before. Or any comments I have is I am just interested is that with this project, whatever is gonna come out of it, what's the long term? Where are you gonna go after that? Is there plans to do other things on Thirty-Fifth Street? With city water through. But that's what I ask is everyone to say, what's the long term plan here? This sounds very odd to spend all this money on a stream if there isn't another plan.
So a few years ago, I believe we did talk about surveying the neighborhood and desire was not to have city water. So we decided not to do city water when we did all the water for the rest of the neighborhood. The only other water project, uh, we're hard discussing the potential connection to Milwaukee where we'd bring water down Thirty-Fifth Street, but it would not be a pipe that you would be able to connect to. So you wouldn't be assessed for that.
How would they put that? Yeah.
It it's still a long ways away, so.
Would it be on the east side of Thirty-Fifth or the west side?
It it's so conceptual now. No, I I can't answer that question.
Would you take a guess?
Let's let's not go there because that's that's even farther out than this project. But but it's fair to ask the question, but I don't have any answers for that.
That is what I'd ask members to take into account. Also, why don't you go down to Thirty-Fifth? See the street. See what you see what we're talking about. So you know what you're talking about. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Knight. Anybody else? Anybody else? Miss Davis, good evening.
Evening. Debbie Davis, ninety-four, sixty, South Ninety-Sixth Street. So it seems to be a theme tonight, public engagement and transparency. So my first concern, um as Dana talked about, is the U D O presentation. I would also request that it be postponed to another meeting because it's a pretty full agenda, and I'm really concerned. It's my top concern in the city of Franklin, this U D O rewrite. Um, particularly like all the zoning is changing and how does that happen without authentic public input? Uh, there is a lot that went into our comprehensive planning, and if we're changing all that, then that requires authentic public engagement. And um so if there are public meetings, it should be in the newsletter. It should be in the now section of the paper. It should be in the patch. I am happy to volunteer to put the word out. Um, but we need that public engagement. And I talked to the consultants last time they presented uh earlier this year. They said, oh, yes, absolutely. I called them. I emailed. And I haven't seen anything on there. And and I haven't seen anything on um the administration's end to um include more public input on things like zoning changes and all the other U D Os that uh impact us. So there's that. I would request the postponement of that and a public engagement plan. Um, I'm also concerned that, and it concerns me a little, I have to say that not only do we not have a voice in this, but our tax hours are paying for consultants to be our voice. So it's sort of like a kind of a double whammy that um my taxes are taking away my voice, it feels like, um, with the U D O rewrite. Uh. G eight. Um, I'm concerned that that um Heath Eddie is being replaced by um a consulting company. I would like to see that that position replaced by um someone who's, you know, with qualifications, that will be someone professional that will be at the city. So I'm I'm concerned about that position not being filled. Um, and gee. Eleven, again, transparency. It seems like there's an awful lot of closed session meetings um with the council and an awful lot of closed session meetings regarding the code of conduct. And is this what we wanted to have happen with the code of conduct? All these meetings, it's um you know, we don't know what's going on. It's taking a lot of time. It makes us kind of nervous. It makes me nervous. Um. I'm also concerned that there have been threats of um lawsuits against people that file complaints. Um. And what else? I think that's a lot of my concerns, and it's probably my three minutes. I'm concerned about the budget, too, but I'll talk about that in public hearing. Thank you.
Thank you. Let me read the uh agenda item for G five, which is the status update. Everybody hear that? Status update of the Unified Development Mark and rewrite. It's a status update to tell everybody where it's at. That's it. G eight. I don't normally do this, but you know, anybody can say anything they want at the microphone, whether it's true or not. So, you know. The consulting contract G eight for consulting services with the planning staff is to consult on individual projects, keep projects moving through the planning department while we're down a person. Actually, we're down a person and a half. So we're not gonna table that either. There is no conspiracy. It's the way it is. It's doing business of the city. Anyone else want to speak? Anyone else? Seeing no one else rise, I will close the public comment period. Move on to item C. Prove a little of the regular common council meeting minutes of November first. Any additions or corrections? Barber and Hope, for all those in favor. Any opposed? Motion carries. Um, the next item is a public hearing on the twenty twenty-three budget. In her inaugural inaugural meeting. Madam Clerk, you have a meeting, a public hearing notice to read.
Notice is hereby given in accordance with section sixty-five point nine zero sub three. Wisconsin State statutes said a public hearing will be held on Tuesday, November fifteenth, twenty twenty-two at six thirty P M or shortly thereafter at ninety-two, twenty-nine West Loomis Road, Franklin, Wisconsin, five, three, one, three, two. On the city of Franklin, twenty twenty-three proposed budget, any resident or taxpayer shall have the opportunity to be heard thereon. A summary of the proposed budget herewith and a copy of the complete proposed budget is available for public inspection at the Franklin City Hall and the Franklin Public Library during normal business hours. The proposed budget is also available online at W W W dot Franklin dot W W W dot Franklin W I dot gov.
Okay, appears we have properly noticed public hearing. Uh, before I open the public hearing, we're gonna have a presentation from the Director of Administration, who's also the Budget Director. Before we do that, I just want to compliment Mrs. Stino. And Denise, on the exceptionally hard work on this budget, this was, as usual, a tough budget. But the the um numbers came in with the help of the Finance Committee, something that I believe is palatable. Uh, but we're gonna review it tonight and get some comments and potentially changes from the common council. But I do appreciate the hard work. It's much appreciated. So with that, Miss Stino.
Thanks, Mayor. Um, this is a bit abbreviated from the presentation on October fourth, when the budget was delivered. So the mayor's recommendation was recommended annual budget was released on October fourth. Of course, there's months of internal preparation, compilation, review. All of the departments of the city and numerous staff are involved in that. And again, this budget couldn't be um completed without all of those people, as well as all of the council members and finance committee members um that we got a lot of input for. So from so thank you very much to all of those people. And we did do a a longer version of this presentation on October fourth, and that is available on the city's website as well. Um, but today what I want to do is hit some of the highlights. The common council did refer that mayor's recommended budget to the Finance Committee so that they could take a look at it in detail. And that happened on October fourth. The Finance Committee did hold three meetings on that budget so that each section of the draft budget could be reviewed in detail. That was in consultation with myself, the Director of Finance, and all of the department heads um came and presented their individual um department budgets. There were a number of updates. Those are in the packet tonight, have been on the website since October eighteenth, and were in the packet on October eighteenth as well. We then brought the um changes from the Finance Committee, more like updates back to the common council on October eighteenth. The council went through all of those items. And then did create what's called the twenty twenty-three proposed budget. That's taken the mayor's original recommended budget, um, accepting some changes and then making it a proposed budget. We did do a public hearing notice off of that. That's the public hearing notice that was referred to a bit earlier. Public hearing notice was published on October twenty-sixth, as is recommend or required by law. And again, the public hearing is tonight. The proposed budget has been available since October fifth in the office of the city clerk, the Franklin Public Library, and on the city's website. In addition, any adjustments that have been made to date have also been added to those um budgets. Just again, stepping back, going over some of the budget priorities, guiding assumptions and strategies throughout the budget, obviously establishing a prudent and fiscally responsible budget was the top um goal of of creating the budget. We are looking to maintain all city services, which are maintained in this budget you have in front of you. Conservative spending um goal that we were given from the mayor was no um tax increase. I I have minimized tax increase, but the direction we were given was no in no tax increase. Um, that was also accomplished. Now, I I say that with a caveat, and that is so for parcels that are new, the taxes are obviously going to be bigger if there's new buildings, et cetera. If somebody had improvements done on their property, those kind of things, those would be a higher tax rate, uh tax amount this year than in the past. I will tell you that when we're talking about the tax rate, we're talking simply about the city of Franklin's share, and that is about twenty-five percent of the overall tax uh rate. We do have a number of other taxing entities that we include in our budget and um turn those funds over to. That would be um, of course, the city of Franklin, the school districts, three of them we have in our city, the Franklin School District, Oak Creek Franklin School District, and a Whittanoe School District portion. We have M M S D and M A T C as well as Milwaukee County. So those are all included. Um, obviously, when we go through the budget, we have a lot of challenges. Certainly, if money was no object, there would be um bigger increases. We have uh staff at the city that really does a good job in um coming up with alternatives, coming up with solutions and doing what we can to provide our services at a reasonable cost to the um citizens and taxpayers. Uh, we do have some restraints restraints at the state level, levy limits, expenditure restraint. Um, and of course, revenues are are pretty stagnant from that state level. We have market pressures and economic pressures that we are dealing with on a regular basis as well. Um, maintaining city services, protecting city assets, and using resources responsibly. Um, our employees, seventy-three percent of our general fund budget. Um, that that's that's the biggest cost in the budget. Of course, we're a service business, so that doesn't surprise us, and a lot of our services are done by our employees. We did have a critical need for an additional firefighter. So that is included in the budget. We have two other personnel additions, one of whom is a community service officer at the Police Department as well as um a planning intern in the planning area. Now, there was a smaller um intern set of hours for that intern in the past, but this is a pretty substantial position. Um, we have been reviewing all operations and evaluating all costs. We're nothing's off the table. We're considering consolidation of services, adopting a feasible new technologies, contracting for services, doing what we can to continue with um the conservative spending and meeting those city needs. Capital spending, um, everything in the capital budget was um approved on its own merits. And I will tell you, I not not anything you don't all know already. Um, there's a lot of capital needs in the community. There's some deferred maintenance going on. We had over a hundred and fifty million dollars of requests, and there's just shy of twenty million in this budget. So back in twenty-two, we had a new initiative to begin a capital improvement plan. In my opinion only, we're still just scratching the surface on that plan, and there's still a lot of work to be done. I've had a lot of conversations with a lot of the elder people um about this very thing. And I think um one of our main um focuses in twenty-three should be um this capital improvement planning, just to get everybody on the same page, make sure we're following the community's directives and planning and um addressing some of those funding needs going into the future. I do want to make a special note. In the twenty twenty-three budget, the twenty twenty-three C I P projects are the only ones that are being recommended for approval. The projects that are listed for twenty-four through twenty-seven are for informational purposes only and will be continued to be evaluated until the year in which um they end up in the actual budget. No work is authorized on any of those projects if they're not included in the twenty twenty-three budget. We do have um a very good debt rating, very strong double A two. We have not issued any debt this year. Um, we do expect that there will be some issue either in December or beginning of the new year for some T I Ds and a water project. Um, but right now, a double A two is a very strong rating, and we have a very responsible um internal borrowing limit as well. We have um a a strong fund balance. We are very concerned in the city of Franklin, have always been um with long-term fiscal health. We have best practices in place. We have a policy. We're following that policy and the criteria and the effects of any spend downs. Um. And we will evaluate that again at the end of the year. In regard to the city services, again, major highlight, no city service reductions, no reductions in staffing. We did have neck new construction in twenty twenty-two. That's the growth of about sixty-five million dollars or one point three four percent. What that did was that afforded approximately two hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars to be added to the levy without increasing taxes. We also had a T I D closure, uh Tax Incremental Financing District, number three, closed in the beginning of the year. And what happened was there's a process through the Department of Revenue and approximately two hundred and two thousand dollars was again available for levy funds. That's a an increase of four hundred and ninety-seven thousand. That was the limit. So any growth handled um all of the increase in rates. So again, unless if something changed at your particular parcel, over the average or especially with an improvement, et cetera, your taxes will not be increasing. And then we do just have a little chart that shows a ten a ten-year history of the levy. Back in two thousand thirteen, the levy was twenty thousand, twenty million, five hundred thousand. We are now sitting at twenty-two, nine. We are now sitting at twenty-two nine, um, ten years later. Uh, as far as the tax rate, we talked about this when the budget first came out, the equalized rate, that's the equalized rate is what's comparing us to the rest of the state. That's the rate that gets compared throughout the entire state. Our equalized rate in two thousand and twenty-one was four dollars and eighty-one cents. It's going down. It went down to four dollars and thirty-seven cents. Again, tax rate went down, values went up, equilibrium should be met. As far as the assessed tax rate, we are financing, uh, finalizing those in the coming days, but we're, we're pretty strong on that four thirty-eight, which is not surprising at all. Again, a very um equal decrease from the assessed and equalized value, and that's because we do a market update every year, and we try to get as close to market value as we are able. Um, we did have um, some reductions in state shared revenue. I think everybody's now aware, we are no longer qualifying for the Expenditure Restraint Program. That is not something that is very normal for a community our size. When you have a tax rate that's less than five dollars per thousand of value, the state says, thank you for being responsible and fiscally um, constraining yourselves, but now you don't get any state aid. So it seems a bit backwards, but it is what it is. And um, so we, of course, created our budget without that.
You can say seems. I say it is.
Um, we do have a fully balanced budget, no planned use of fund balance. We have in our overall expenditures increased by approximately seven hundred and twenty thousand. And then, as far as our personnel costs, about four hundred and sixty thousand of that, and then some other miscellaneous um, adjustments. We do have a partially funded reserve for succession planning. Uh, like other cities, we're, we're in a, a pretty big turnover period. But to maintain regular staffing levels and not have long periods of vacancies, we're trying to get this reserve to where we can. Um, but I can tell you, it's not enough. We did have a goal of lower health insurance plan costs. Um, we, we have achieved that goal. We have not reduced any of the benefits for our employees. We just held some open enrollment meetings over the last two days and um, rolled out all the benefits for two thousand and twenty-two, uh, sorry, for two thousand and twenty-three as approved by the Personnel Committee and the Council. And um, we're happy to say that the benefit plus are all the same for the same level of benefits. Capital spending, as I mentioned earlier, approximately twenty million. Um, again, the biggest portion, that's that second eight of your budget. No change in the O P E B, the other um, pension obligations, uh, no change in the solid waste fee. We're at a dollar thirty-nine sixty. That was up from, I'm sorry, a hundred thirty-nine sixty. That's up from a hundred and thirty-four sixty in two thousand and twenty-one. So the increase happened in two thousand and twenty-two, and we believe the fund balance is in a place where we can um, not increase that rate this year. We do have the American Rescue Plan funding. I've talked about this a lot over the last couple of months, approximately three point seven five million provided to the city over the years twenty two and twenty-three. We have about a million and a half of that um, obligated so far for the fiber network for city operations, as well as a new phone system. We are contemplating purpose of spending for the remaining portion. We do have until two thousand and twenty-four to commit that money and two thousand and twenty-five to spend it. Uh, you've been hearing a lot about the U D O, the Unified Development Ordinance, that is being updated right now. Um, it's been a, a pretty big intensive process, and um, it will continue until it's um, completed. Then we'll be embarking on master plan update and comprehensive outdoor recreation plan update um, in the next couple of years. Certainly, some things we need to focus on. Uh, growth is a great thing in a community, growth and development. However, with growth and development becomes a lot of um, future obligations. So what we're doing is we're trying to balance those and uh, make sure that, you know, growth is paying for growth and existing customers and citizens aren't burdened um, by that growth happening. We continue again to address the citywide aging infrastructure. Um, that's definitely gonna be a lot of conversation and um, work on that over the next number of years. And then, as was mentioned, we're also looking at the city's future water source, has been going on for a number of years. We're hoping to come to some kind of a solution in the next six or so months. Um, certainly, we try to attract and maintain a high-quality workforce. That includes succession planning, continuing review of pay and benefits. Uh, we do have an update to the city's classification and compensation program proposed for the two thousand and twenty-three budget, something that we think is a sp- is important, especially in this market. And then the implementation of merit pay. Uh, we're also focusing in all departments on operational efficiencies and evaluation of services, making sure that what we're providing is matching what our citizens are looking for. Debt service fund, um, this year, we have a one point one million dollar debt service levy. That means one point one million dollars of the taxes go directly to pay debt service. Uh, very reasonable amount for a city of our size with the infrastructure going on. I will say we have a six point three million dollar borrow in this plan. What that will do is that will increase the two thousand and twenty-four requirements. Um, we do have debt that falls off. The Finance Committee has just asked for just a, a little bit of a a projection on how that's gonna look going forward, as far as what that's falling off, what's coming on, what we're gonna need in twenty-four and beyond. And we're gonna be working with them on that over the coming months. Um, we talk often about the debt shortfalls in the TIDS. We, we have um active TIDS going on, uh, TIDS, TID three closed this year, TID four is up for closure in two thousand and twenty-three. So that leaves five, six, seven, and eight for active TIDS. While they're not certainly flush, I will say the, the TIDS, we, you know, we don't have that boondoggle TID. We don't have that big um, problem TID. We have a means to get all of these TIDS um, completed, successful, and closed earlier than planned as we go forward into the future, which is um, for some of those big costs, really comforting. Uh, we do work in it. We're working on that future borrowing plan. And then, um, again, the one-time large projects that are included in the budget would increase the borrowing compared to the um, current plan or the prior plan. That was two million dollars every other year for general fund borrowing. There will be a lot of conversation on those um, projects, and none of those projects will go forward until council, until or unless council approves those. Any questions?
Questions from the Common Council. I'm sure, Commissioner, I'll hold it one hand, man.
And this is not so much a question as it is a comment before we get into the public hearing portion of this. Um, because I do wanna offer or extend my thanks to Peggy and Denise for their work on this um, and to the mayor. Um, while technically this is titled the mayor's recommended budget for two thousand and twenty-three. Um, the mayor, along with Peggy and Denise, give us a starting point. And then it becomes very, very much a, a group effort with our staff, with the Finance Committee, and I wanna also thank my colleagues on the Finance Committee. We have some tremendous leadership on that committee, especially with our chairman, um, lots of great history, um, very sober and discerning discussions. And um, I, I think it's very important to note that the city of Franklin is very, very financially strong and healthy, especially compared to so many other communities throughout the state. And, you know, we can thank past councils throughout the years for their fiscal conservancy um, that got us to this place. And I can't speak for my other colleagues, but I do feel that that is one area in which we are largely well-aligned, is maintaining that conservancy and that level of fiscal health. There was um, a rumor floating around, as the mayor mentioned earlier, um, on rumor, sometimes it seems a, a rumor flies and suddenly it becomes so, but it was going around the community that the city was broke. I don't know how or where that ever came out. Um, we are most definitely not broke, and um, we are on very, very solid financial footing, and as an alder, I'm very, very proud of that, and I um, will continue to work towards upholding that. So, but thank you to everyone who was involved in this process.
I also echo the thanks uh, to the staff that was involved in this. And one of the things or two things that were pointed out in this presentation was the lack of state funding that we are trying to deal with. That's a huge thing. Uh, the, the mayor kinda shouted out there. We all that have been around this, we agree. It's, it's, it's terrible. It's, it's, it's a big change. It's a big hit to us. Uh, another is the other taxing entities that are involved in this, in our total, when you get your tax bill, see what we can use. And that this year is approximately seventy-three percent of our budget goes for staffing. Cause we are in the service business. That's what we do. We provide services. So I'm very confident with this budget as well. I'm uh, very happy that we're, and our goal is zero. The zero increase to citizens, and we're all up here, we're all taxpaying citizens as well. And uh, then we do, the groundwork was laid years and years ago, and that's kind of, that's uh, how we view things, in my personal opinion, as we try to provide the, the highest level of service, police, fire, garbage collection, best streets we can get, and stay out of your way. That's, that's my personal opinion about government. Provide you with what you want and stay out of the way. Thank you. Um, just real quick on this shared revenue and state funding. That the meeting of all the mayors and village presidents in the county on Monday, and that was an hour and a half discussion on how do we get the state to understand the bind they put us in? You look at communities like Cudahoga, experienced negative growth. So that means they're getting mu- they, they have less money than they started with for their budget this year. How do they give their employees even a penny more? We're not in that position, but it's a serious issue and um, and it's not like we're talking to the state about raising taxes to give us more money. They've got an eight billion dollar uh, fund balance. They've overtaxed us eight billion dollars, but they can't see their way clear to work on a funding change for their municipality. It's shameful. Okay, and uh, Oliver Wilhamp.
Um, yes, I wanna extend my thanks to um, Peggy and Denise, our financial people here, for answering my questions very clearly and getting me those answers back even as late as um, this evening. I had one more that um, Chief Peggy approached me on. I guess, Mayor, at this point, I would like to know um, what kind of process. Um, as you know, I always have a lot of questions, but um, since staff has done a good job, and I, I feel that's my job is to ask questions and, and get answers, um, especially if people bring them to me. But um, I have only two, and I think it would be more appropriate to wait until after the public hearing. I just didn't know if you were gonna allow any after the public hearing. And then I wanted to know about how you are um, talking about proceeding with motions and when you will entertain such motions. Thank you.
Yeah, as in the past, we'll do the public hearing, take into account what the public has to say about the budget, and then we'll close the public hearing, go to the council members. If you have changes, staff will help you with suggested motions and make them then, and would you wanna approve the budget with the changes?
So it'll be a separate item. The hearing is one item, so talk about just what is, what's going on, hear from the public, contemplate any of that, and then when we go into the next item, that I think would be the best time to talk about those changes. And yes, any changes that happen before the budget occurs would be preferred.
Okay. All right. This is a public hearing on the budget. I will open the public hearing. There is no time limit on comments or questions, so anyone wishing to speak on the budget, please rise, come forward, give us your name and address, and let us know what you think. Anyone? Yeah, please. This will be unique, cause typically nobody comments on the budget. So please, we look forward to it.
Diane Sukorski on Thirty-Fifth Street. Is, I'm interested in this eight billion dollars that the state won't release. And I just am curious about that. That really struck me because I hear that in the city of Milwaukee a lot, that there's a lot of talk about how the state is kind of uh, withholding funds that maybe the city could use for some of their issues. And I was just surprised to hear that the same thing is happening with Franklin, or is it the same thing? And if they, if it is, is there anything at all that regular people can do to loosen the purse strings?
Stay seated, Debbie. Okay, I don't work for the state. Um, I'm not a state representative. I'm just a local mayor, you know, and that's what they look at us as, as just the local mayor. But the state threw uh, additional collection of excess taxes. I use the pejorative by saying excess, but it turns out that they're excess taxes. Through efficient state operations, through reduced spending, through good interest rates, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. They acquire additional money throughout the years to balance off their expenditures, much the same as happens to us periodically. We end the year with fund balances period and every year. Uh, but that amount is now eight million dollars. I'm sorry, eight billion dollars with a B, billion with a B. And there's always discussions on what to do with the money. And municipalities, that being cities, towns, villages, and counties, are never mentioned in the mix. And yet, we're under uh, very strict restraints on our tax levy. Um, and we can't raise it more than new growth. It's not a huge problem for the city of Franklin because we have, as you saw, one point three percent. No, yeah, one point three percent growth that netted us almost three hundred thousand dollars in spendable dollars in new taxes. But that's not the case. In, in Milwaukee County, there's nineteen municipalities. Fully two-thirds of them at little or no increase that was any appreciable. Uh, Hales Corners had an increase of something like twelve thousand dollars. How do you pay for a raise for your police department? It's just not possible. So what could you do as a private citizen? Get on your phone to the state legislators and call the governor. You know, I, I don't wanna set up an us with them, but the governor always talks about more money for schools. And the schools get more money every year. We don't. We get nothing. I mean, here, as, as Director Stino pointed out, we're fiscally conservative. We manage our budget really well, thanks to our department heads. They keep, they keep their line. And so every year, we're responsible. But we don't get any credit for it from the state. They reduce our, our shared revenue, which is a promise from the nineteen hundreds when they, in nineteen fourteen, when they instituted um, the um, income tax. The goal was, is they would collect the tax and send seventy-five percent of it back to municipalities. Now municipalities get a very small portion, six percent maybe. So it's the state not doing what they promised. So call your state legislators and tell them this is nuts. So thank you. Mrs. Davis.
Debbie Davis, ninety-four sixty, South Ninety-Sixth Street. Um, that is an important issue, and I know that you mentioned that Governor Evers had um, asked for more funding for schools, but actually, and got that funding, but because the dominant party didn't raise the caps, none of that funding actually went to the schools. And so, again, it's a burden on us locally because we will have to pay for new schools with referendums. Um, and also, our governor had put in his budget a two percent increase in um, shared revenue, which was taken out by the um, dominant party, and it was, um, I was a former candidate for our state assembly, and that was one of my campaign issues, is that we need to increase um, shared revenue for our municipalities. And I did speak with our current Assemblyperson today, um, Representative Chuck Wickers, and he's new representing us. He had been in Waukesha County exclusively, and now he represents us as well. And he did invite me and all his constituents to speak to him about what we needed um, from him legislatively. So I echo what our mayor said, please contact your state legislators and say that um, we do need that shared revenue and know that the governor supports that as well. Um, so um, and so thank you for that great presentation. It was really informative. I'd love to go back and study it um, more because so much this is new to me. But I am concerned about the water project. I'm concerned um, about the level of debt that will accrue the water project. I would like to see um, a comparison and have another public meeting about the differences in costs between using the Oak Creek water and using the Milwaukee water. Um, and I'm concerned that we are increasing our debt by such a high rate with the water project at a time when the interest rates are so high. So I'm concerned on a, and there's still um supply chain issues. So I'm concerned for the city and taxpayers, and of course, I'm also concerned for the residents that um have to pay an elevated rate for those mains. So that's my primary concern with the budget is the debt will incur for the um water project. I would prefer to see it put off when interest rates go down and supply chains improve. Thank you. Water project. I would prefer to see it put off when interest rates go down and supply chains improve. Thank you.
These are all great. Anyone else wishing to speak? Anybody? Let's go for a world record. One more. Uh, okay, all right. Seeing no one else rise, even though. Madam Director.
Requested um, on the landfill sighting. And that is in this hearing notice. Again, I I know it was requested, so I just don't want to slip by that without mentioning it. Other than that, I think we've covered everything.
Okay, with that, I will close the public hearing on the budget. Um, without objection, I'll move to item G one and ordinance adopting the twenty twenty-three annual budgets. I'll leave the rest of the verbiage for the motion. Madam Director.
Thank you. So what you have in front of you under G one is the ordinance, the city of Franklin does an ordinance, some communities do a resolution, but we do an ordinance. And that is in front of you, matching everything that's in the current budget with all the changes that the council made to date. Um, I know there were some questions on. Different uh, Alderman Hofer had had a question, and maybe this is a good time for that.
I'm fine with giving the floor to Alderman Hofer.
Uh, thank you. So in section ten, and I'm I'm just going to read this. That the capital improvement fund expenditure appropriation, excluding the contingency allocation, shall be administered. As if adopted on a per project basis, and unless otherwise requiring a statutorily executed budget modification. Modification of the appropriations administrative allocation between or to projects. Is subject to authorization by at least a two thirds majority of the common council in the form of a budget modification. Which, as an internal administrative process, does not initiate publication requirements. So I read that about three times. And I had a little trouble trying to find out where you're going with that. And what I would like to have you explain in layman's terms, so that everybody at home and in here can understand. Exactly what is the process for how funds are allocated? What limits there are in maintaining that the common council has the control of approving the budget and approving expenditures.
Before you do that, A- Alderman Hofer is referring to section ten. It's on page forty-one of the packet, for those of us playing along with the home version.
Okay, so yes, that section is a mouthful, and I I'm going to admit when I, when we were putting this ordinance together, we looked at this and went, what? Um, honestly, what it's saying is, is I'm going to just back up. The way that funds are allocated according to the state budget is they're allocated by activity or purpose. So for example, I often use the fire department. If the fire department buys a chair or hires somebody to fix their garage doors. Or um, any of their medical supplies, those are all fire purposes. So what state law does is it says that within those, that single purpose. If the department head needs to adjust those amounts within that budget, within that purpose, it does not require a budget amendment. So the council approves those operating costs. And then the department head, in this case, fire, would go ahead and administer those. Um, at the city of Franklin, we do follow that, obviously, because it's the law, but we take it just one step for further than that. We monitor on a personnel versus non-personnel. Not not uncommon. A lot of cities do that. Again, there's not a really a budget requirement, a budget amendment requirement when funds go between the two, but the city has its own rule that. Council approves any unused payroll dollars for. Supplies, contracts, those kind of services. That's normal. This takes it even further than that, and it says, okay, we're not going to do it on an activity level, and we're not going to do it on a function level, but every single project in the cap- in its. In it's just listed to the capital improvement fund, which is interesting. Um, so in the capital improvement fund, any project that's one dollar over what the budget amount is, the council needs to do a budget amendment and have a super majority to approve that. That's what this says. It's not required, um, but as we were completing the ordinance last week, I didn't want to change something at the last minute. This has been in here for a long time. This is really something we should look at with. The finance committee as we go forward. I think we have some more ideas about how we might be able to streamline things a little bit. We use a lot of really complex reporting. Um, mechanisms in the budget, and sometimes I think it's harder to understand what's in the budget with those mechanisms than maybe just keeping a little more simple. So the bottom line is, is any item in the capital improvement fund. Um, any project in there is greater than ten thousand. The council is going to approve that project, no matter if it's a budget amendment or not. So I see that process, this process. As a little bit duplicative. State law doesn't require it. Our own policies don't require it. This one section in the ordinance does, but with that said. None of you have to worry about that because you are going to see every single project that's in the capital improvement fund. That's fund forty-six, and that's on page two fifty-six in your budget books. Every single one of those projects is going to come to council before they're spending on them. So. Long story short, that was a mouthful. What you said, it's true, it's in there. We're going to administer it that way, but we're also going to look over the year of twenty twenty-three and see what we can do to. Streamline that language a little bit and make sure everybody can understand it.
So you said if it's over a dollar over, it it comes to the council. How much leeway is there? Somebody comes in substantially under the budget. How much leeway does a department head have to say, well, now I've got this extra money from this project? What's the controls and limits on that?
So in the operating budget, there's a little more flexibility because again, that's done by purpose. But in the capital improvement fund, there's zero flexibility. And and you know, there's some big dollars in here, so you can understand why that would be. Um, but again, that will not change because right now it's on a per project level. Um, so just to run down our purchasing, we we have a purchasing policy we put in place. Um, I think I wrote it a year and a half ago. And we wrote it because we were having problems with police and fire grants because we couldn't get them. Without having a procurement policy in place, following federal rules two F R. So we now have that in place. What we need to do is we need to shore up our. Our, what I'm going to call our local purchasing policy. Informally, you you're not going to find this in writing anywhere, but anything up to five thousand dollars that's in the budget is the, under the purview of the department head. Anything that's in the budget between five and ten thousand dollars is the purview of the mayor. And anything over ten thousand, that's not a maintenance. So usually, for example, G I S, we have, we have Arc G I S as our software. It costs like eighteen thousand dollars for maintenance. When the council approved that. They approved the maintenance to go along with it. All other purchases that are over ten thousand that are not already approved by the council. Or part of a purchase that was done already, anything ten thousand and over does come to the council. So that's how that goes. But again, we would really like to get that formalized in a local purchasing policy, added to the purchasing policy that handles our federal grants.
And then you mentioned a policy that covered grants, and we had a grant discussion earlier in the evening. So if the council approves. Grant funds to be used for X, it needs to be used for X, or else the department would have to come back and ask the council again. To use it for something else.
Absolutely correct. Yeah, uh, any grants. So even when we have grants, they still go through the city treasury. So anything going through the city treasury is required to have. Um, council authority or a budget line and appropriation. So when anybody goes for the police and depart- police and fire departments, they get regular grants and health department, they get regular grants, so they budget for those. So that's shown in our budget. That's all good. But if there's any other grants that we get, council would have to, um, basically, we say to all the department heads, what you need to ask council for is number one, can I apply? Number two, can I receive it? And number three, can I spend it? And only after all three of those things happen can that project proceed.
Thank you.
Okay, Peggy, I'm going to need a little help with this because I'm going to be thinking out loud just a little bit as I go, trying to piece together a lot of what you said about activity and purpose. And all will come before the council, capital improvement funds, um, and then required by the city treasurer and um, budget lines and approvals and how that's applied. So all of these things kind of wrap up into the question that I had presented to you earlier. And also the citizens that were concerned about where the project is going on Thirty Fifth. So what happened was we had a grant that was applied for. On behalf of the city, but it didn't actually come out as on behalf of the city. It turned into the, this organization applying for the city, and they take, took over the project. I was not sure that was our intent, but that's actually what happened. So when the organization put in for the grant and asked for money, which was about two hundred thousand, five hundred dollars for the project. On the grant, the city's committed portion is two hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars. From the last that I saw. So the city's committed portion is actually coming from what is called M M S D funds. And when I asked the city administration about how, how do we track those? Where do I find those? Where's the line item in the budget? Uh, there really isn't a line item. So I'm like, okay, so now we have this resolution out there that says, go forward, apply for grants, design this thing. And there's really no stop gate in there except for one thing. And that was that we said, oh, remember our ordinance, you got to come back to council before you put it out to bed. So I guess the question that comes up is. Do we, are we going to have to, as a council, somehow approve this grant money so we can have some sort of ability? To see the designer decide, do we really want to do this design? And how will that process come before the council because of this grant? That went out, and that will, I think, help a lot of people in the audience.
And it'll apply to any, any other grant as well, but in this one in particular, we talked about this as staff today, and basically what will occur is. Before it, there was a council action sheet and a resolution back in February of twenty twenty-two, and that's what kind of kicked this whole thing off. And so in that um, council action sheet, it says that the city will, no matter what happens, until the uh, council approves something. There will be no cost bound to the city, and there will be no obligation on the city. So that still holds true. The M M S D funds, even though they're M M S D funds that are earmarked for the city of Franklin, the council will approve. Any funding agreement before any funds are released to any organization on behalf of the city of Franklin. So what will happen is, in this case, if if indeed that all comes back and it's more than just a concept and it goes forward. Council will have a kick at that before it becomes a project. And council will be able to talk about the funding and what's coming from M M S D and what the city might have to supplement it with and how that would happen. Those questions would all come to the council before anything goes forward on this project.
So what would happen if, um, and I, we know we're going a little bit out of the budget, but this is kind of budget related because we need to know where the funds are coming from, and that's budget. So let's say the organization gets the two hundred thousand dollars and uses that for the design purpose. And then there, they kind of already told the organization they got the grant from, that the city was going to come in with these M M S D funds. Are they allowed to move forward with the design if we don't approve the match?
Absolutely not.
Okay, I think that would be very helpful for um, the residents to know, because I think there's a concern on what is the design? Is anyone going to overlook the design? Okay, that's really great. So that kind of takes care of my question. I wanted to know. What are these green solution funds? Where's the line item in the budget? And since it's not in the budget, we are tracking these in what method? What's the bottom line method on how we are tracking these if they're not in this big document?
So the, the city engineer works closely with M M S D. The the first line on that is M M S D tracks all those funds. They award funds, they give cities a certain amount of time to spend it. They do allow you to combine years, different things like that, but they're our first line of of record keeping. The city engineer is the second one, so he would be able to tell us, and he did tell us over these last few weeks. What do we have out there for um, green solutions funds through M M S D? What projects are they going to? There was a reference in the budget about three projects. Project number one is the Hickory Street Bio Swale, all the storm work out there, about eight hundred and seventy-five thousand. Um, and that was approved by the council in the council action sheet that approved Hickory. The second project is the Water Tower Park one. That's in progress, not approved yet, but it's in the works, and that will come to council. Glenn, please correct me if anything's not correct. And then the third one is perhaps this project you're talking about, that's not a project yet, or Elm Road Storm. So there's going to be a similar. Um, improvement on Elm Road, much like there is on Hickory Street at some point in the future, and that could be project number three. So project number three in the budget was really that one, and then depending on if this one comes.
Well, if I have any say, I'm sure the residents would prefer to use all of that over in Elm Road or one of those other projects, and then that issue would go away or not, or announced it. The, I guess I'm, my other comment, since I still have the floor, is I am also concerned about the debt on the water. Issues, and I won't expand on that. Um, and I also encourage a need for a breakdown and comparison on, are we going to do this or are we going to do that? And I think that should come sooner than later, since we're already. Putting money in, in the budget in anticipation. I would like to see us really talk details about that cost because it's probably going to be more than the Ryan Creek Interceptor for cost. Pretty close. And then related to the conversations that have kind of surrounding tonight. Is on page six or two sixty-eight of the budget. Is the review of the street improvement program for two thousand twenty-three ceiling and of the possible route. So. We pretty much have heard that possible route for water connections. Would be this Thirty Fifth Street, and that was um, mentioned by the city engineer, although we all know that's not not decided. There's no big plan. But anticipation for if that could happen. Um, and an alternate is Thirty First Street. I would like to make sure that we, before we put twenty twenty-three ceiling of that road, which is in the street program. That we try to figure out if we should maybe wait on sealing that because we don't know what we're going to do. So that would be my request on, on that, on that street. So. I do have a motion I would like to make. And um, if the maker of the main motion who adopts the budget would just like to insert my motion as to the change, I would be perfectly acceptable. Um, with that, um, Mayor, this is actually going to save you money at this point, which might go for those shares.
It it only saves me the amount of money on my taxes. It saves all of its money. Uh, pro- we should probably do these motions separate from the main motion and then just adopt the changes.
As amended, that would be great.
As amended.
Okay, so um, I wrote this out. If you think it needs a little bit more addition for clarity, uh, let me know. So I would like to move to amend the proposed budget by removing the project. Within the twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-seven capital improvement plan. Titled Thirty Fifth Street Trail Marquette to Drexel, as listed on page two thirty-four, including additional reference pages. Having a total, um, project total of one million, three hundred and eighty-eight thousand, seven hundred and eighteen dollars. To allow council review related to the project connectivity. And linkage routes, land purchase and or access costs. And the priority within the adopted comprehensive outdoor recreation plan. Um, and just for clarification, when I asked, Peggy, she told me, make sure you cover what, where it's coming from, what page number it is, what the project is, and that's why. It's as detailed as it is. I wanted to make sure that everybody, um, two thirty-four.
Um, but that is in the twenty twenty-four capital improvement plan that is not being approved tonight.
I understand that. Okay, I'm still asking for its removal until more information.
Okay.
Yeah.
Uh, I guess I would like to hear. From either Representative Parks and Engineering, if there's any negative consequences to taking that out.
Alderman Hammond. Page button, please.
Parks Committee, uh, and I'll be honest, Parks Commission reviewed the budget last night, and I do have um, a recommendation um, on another item to share. But we really did not get into the twenty twenty-four budget at that time. My guess is that they would be very happy to have more information and input. Prior to assigning funds to that. prior to um, assigning funds to that. And I, I'm unclear. Does it, do we have, this one does not have impact fee implications. So um, that would be the only thing I'd really be looking for at this point in time is if that was going to impact. What we could use an impact fees. Sorry to use impact so much.
It does have impact fees. Anything in the out years just don't have them all designated. It's only the current year. So it does relate to impact fees. Because it's a new trail for growth. Sorry.
There are a lot of trails, including all the ones surrounding schools. I'm sure we can find a replacement. One of my concerns with this one is it parallels an existing sidewalk. And so all I'm asking is you can put it back in next year. But all I'm asking is that everybody take a look at this, make sure it actually is doing what we want it to do. We're looking at project connectivity. Um, I know the area pretty well. I'm the one who helped write the grants for the existing trails over there. We don't own the land where this would be going. We don't have access and all of that should come first. And there is no um, land purchase in the budget at this time. So since this is 2024 and it is premature, um, I think we have plenty of time to look at it and put it back in. I didn't really feel it's necessary. And I would ask uh, for a second for my motion.
Second by Alderman Nelson. Discussion on the motion. Motion is to remove from the 2024, but make note of it in 2023, the Thirty-Fifth Street Trail. All those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, so we'll incorporate that into the main motion. Any other action? Alderman Hammond, I know you had some things.
Mayor, um, as I just mentioned, Parks Commission reviewed the budget last night and um, they're offering a recommendation for a friendly amendment. And for those following along, I am on page two thirty-one of the capital improvement plan. Uh, wait. Yes, two thirty-one. Get my pages mixed up here. Um, so the motion is to adjust the park projects, but retain the same overall budget amount.
Of course.
We're just shifting, shifting money from projects in the 2023 proposed budget by removing um, the two fitness court items. The senior fitness court for either Ernie Park, Ernie Lake Park, or Jack Workman Park at $75,000 and a fitness court at either Jack Workman or Pleasant View for $10,000. And add that $85,000 to the line item for tennis court repairs, which is currently at $200,000. The rationale for this being um, the Parks Commission toured our parks on October twenty-ninth, thirtieth. Anyway, that weekend, um, and really looked at the condition of our tennis courts and repairs. Um, we have some courts that are in dire, dire need of repair. This is not a new um, situation for us. But the cost of these repairs is going up dramatically. Um, $200,000 for repairs will maybe get us one small court done at Jack Workman Park, but um, we wanted to, to move that $85,000 so that it's a little more accurately reflecting what the costs will likely be.
Now, before you guys do that, understand this is going to be making my wife very much upset because she saw this senior fitness thing in Ernie Park and said, Mr. Mayor, it's time for you to go get some exercise.
We already do have some fitness equipment in.
All I'm saying is, is that this is going to make me happy, but it's going to make her mad.
It's no excuse. There already is some exercise equipment.
Nice try. See, you know my wife. But anyway, okay. Alderman Wilhelm.
This, um, I guess I need to kind of direct to Alderman Hammond. Um, I'm sorry, I missed which one from PB Park you were going to.
Um, I don't have line item numbers on there, but there was a proposed um, fitness court. Well, there's two. There's a senior fitness court at Ernie Lake or Jack Workman.
Jack Workman slash pleasant.
Slash Pleasant View for the regular fitness court. And the rationale from Parks Commission on this is um, they really want to, now that we've got the Southwest Park purchased and we've satisfied that portion of the comprehensive outdoor recreation plan. Um, the goal is to get all of our maintenance taken care of that maybe had been deferred for a few years. Take care of what we have um, before making any new um, equipment purchases for existing parks.
Okay, I, I guess with that, I'd like to know, since you're going down the tennis court and I have pickleball courts that are brand new that never got opened this year. Um, is that need budget amount to fix those courts and can we share that over with that? Or is that covered under a warranty issue because the courts have never been played on?
So, so you correct, there is some significant issues with the court. Uh, we actually have a tennis court expert who's been working on tennis courts since the late nineteen sixties. And since this is the first time he's run into this issue. Uh, we are holding money from the contractor. We expect the contract to come back next spring. Mill up what is there and resurface everything. So we're the process now trying to figure out how much money to hold back from their final payment. So we can make sure that happens with no additional costs in the city.
Thank you. So Mayor, do you need a?
Having so. So.
I'll make.
Okay, motion by Hammond, second by Wilhelm. Any other discussion on that motion? And for the people going along at the home version, this is not going to impact your taxes. This just relines some capital spending for this year. Okay, anybody on the motion? All those in favor of the motion to delete those projects and transfer money, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Anyone else? Anyone else? Other one, Ikeman? Oh, okay. All right, um, Madam Director of Administration or Madam Finance Officer, who's got the motion?
Motion is, the recommended motion is listed on page thirty-eight and you would just include the statement as amended with two earlier amendments.
Their motion adopts an ordinance number twenty twenty-two, whatever it's going to be, an ordinance adopting the twenty twenty-three annual budgets for the general civic celebrations, St. Martin's Fair. Donations, grants, solid waste collection, sanitary sewer, caper alley, equipment replacement, street improvement, capital improvement, debt service, development, utility development to three, to four, to five, to six, to seven, to eight. Did that out of memory. American Recovery Act, opioid settlement fund and internal service funds and establishing the tax levy and other revenue for the city of Franklin and establishing solid waste fee, including and accepting the approved amendment this evening and tech, technical corrections as needed to update the proposed ordinance. Hope for and Hanneman. Madam Clerk will lead a roll call, please. When you get, when you're ready.
Alderman Hope for.
Aye.
Alderman Ikeman.
Aye.
Alderman Wilhelm.
Aye.
Alderman Hanneman.
Aye.
Alderman Barber.
Aye.
Alderman Nelson.
Aye.
Motion carries six eyes, no nose, no abs, no, no abstentions, I thank the common council for their hard work on this. Department heads for their hard work. They did ask for what they needed. They didn't get all what they needed. Both chiefs are looking at me like, we know where you live. Uh, but I appreciate the hard work of these Gilbert, our finance officer and the director of administration. This is Stino and the finance committee who spent many long hours on this. So thank you very much. Taxpayers. All things being equal, you shouldn't see any increase in your taxes. I think we need that. City side. But yeah, appropriately pointed out from the city. Uh, so, okay. With that, uh, we move on to item G two, certified survey map for Rick Prisbilla. This is uh, part of southeast one quarter, the southeast one quarter, section nine, township five north, range twenty-one east in the city of Franklin. Rick Prisbilla is the applicant at seventy-eight thirty-two West Drexel.
Motion to that.
Second.
Ikeman and Hope for Mr. City Attorney. I'll fill the dead air. This was um, reviewed and approved by the Plan Commission at their last meeting.
Okay, I think it's the resolution referring to comments below. Maybe that's the next one. There was a condition that should be amended, but.
Subject to technical corrections by the city attorney. Hold on, Ikeman.
Well, it might not be this one.
Well, if, if there's no technical corrections, you don't have to worry about it, right? Is that your motion, Alderman? And Alderman Hammond and Hope. All right, on the motion, subject to technical corrections by the city attorney, all those in favor? And the opposed? Motion carries companion motion for G three. It's a neighboring property, seventy-seven twenty-six West Drexel Avenue. This is a conditional approval of certified survey map, one lot and one outlet.
Same.
Alderman Ikeman and Alderman, Alderman Hanneman. That also comes with condition of technical corrections by the city attorney. All those in favor of that motion, signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. G four on page one oh one, a request from the fire department to replace the motor and its fourth backup ambulance. Uh, thank you, Alderman Wilhelm and Alderman Ikeman. I just got a comment on this. We, we're, our run volume is increasing dramatically and we're currently down one engine and one ambulance. Two, two ambulances. Which makes our response tough. And for those of you who watch the fire engines leave the station, number one, you've seen Greenfield engine, you've seen Hales Corners engines, you've seen Oak Creek engines. Who do you got today? Stallus engines. That comes from a shared service agreement that we signed on to a couple of years ago, uh, which has been very beneficial to the city of Franklin, but the surrounding communities, our fire departments work very well together. And this is an instance where it's proven. But now that Stallus is down an engine now because they're loaning it to us. So this is good. So thank you, common council. All those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Next month, there'll be a engine engine. Yes, I did say that. An engine engine. Oh, okay. G five. Wait a minute. Let's, uh, status update on the U D O, Matt and Miss X. And you're going to get an engine engine thing? Now you get a substitute, substitute update. Marion.
Thank you, Mayor. So this is a status update on the Unified Development Ordinance rewrite. This is just to clarify, and I know the common council is aware of this, but based on some of the discussion in the room, the Unified Development Ordinance is, it governs the um, zoning of the city. So it's different from the comprehensive master plan in that the comp plan um, is decisions about land use, whereas this is more detailed. Um, so it's things like what are the development standards? Where can things go on a lot? Um, so it's a little bit more detailed and they are different things. Um, we did have a public input session earlier in the year. Um, and I am just going to canvas the status of this because the task force, which consists of the Plan Commission with the addition of a member of the Economic Development Commission and two members of the Environmental Commission have been hard at work um, to bring you an updated U D O. So um, as you know, there was a presentation to the task force on February third in twenty twenty-two. Um, and there have been workshops. The first workshop um, was conducted on September eighth and then also on September twenty-first um, during the regular meetings of the Plan Commission. At that time, they reviewed um, articles one through four, and that is the update that I am bringing to you this evening. So that information was included in the packet for the common council. Um, and I just want to take a step back and clarify where we are in this process. So the project kickoff and public engagement occurred at the very beginning. Um, and we're currently in the drafting process. So there was a diagnostic process that occurred um, where we evaluated the current zoning for any areas of non-conformity, places where it doesn't meet state law, et cetera. Um, and now we're in the draft process. So we're roughly halfway through that process. Um, you are getting your first look at articles one through four in a draft form with Plan Commission, the task force um, feedback incorporated into it. Um, the task force is meeting again this Thursday. Um, and they will be discussing articles five and six. So um, at this time, we're about halfway through that review process. I will note, we are a little bit behind in the overall process. Um, we think about two months behind, um, partly just due to workload. So um, yeah, that's where we are at the moment. Um, just again, to reiterate, articles one through four, there's a draft in your packet this evening and then on November seventeenth at seven PM, there'll be the task force meeting here. So um, I want to canvas very quickly what's covered in these and then um, if there are questions, I will endeavor to answer them, although our principal planner isn't here. So um, I'll do my best. And if there's something I can't answer, I will get back to you with more information. And so just generally, um, article one is the general provision. So it's essentially establishing the ordinance as the development ordinance for the, the for the city, it is a required chapter. Um, and so this is essentially answering how does this ordinance fit in with the other municipal code and within state and federal law? Article two is the establishment of districts. Um, this describes the purpose of the district. So each district, um, broadly, there are residential, commercial, industrial and miscellaneous districts. Um, and the names of those districts are fairly straightforward. So um, residential districts ranging from a very large lot size with conservation purposes on down to um, there are the Village Residence District, which is mostly specific to St. Martin's. Um, but it's just describing the purpose of those districts. Um, the commercial districts, um, you're all familiar with the various types of businesses in the city, but it's focused on those retail and office uses, industrial and agricultural districts. Um, so the business park, limited industrial, and then we have retained the two agricultural districts. Um, and then miscellaneous districts, including parks, institutional and the landfill. So that describes the purpose. Article three um, is getting into the nitty gritty. So this is the form standards for um, development in the city. So um, it canvases things like the bulk and dimension of housing, where they can be located on the lot. Um, I recognize that this right now is a lot of tables. The intent in the long term is to provide illustrations with this. I don't have examples with me, but Oak Creek um, recently did a similar update and their website has some examples produced by the same consultant that the city is using. Um, and so it canvases that. There is also a section here related to the floodplain. Um, we will be coming back to that as part of the natural resource standards, but it was included in this portion of the update. Um, and then um, establishing some, some standards for St. Martin's and other areas. So the floodplain ordinance, just to clarify where we are with that, um, the House Yolavine has a consultant with this group that um, is specifically helping with the natural resource standards because Franklin has such high standards on many issues, um, and also because there is a need to update them to conform with state and federal law. Uh, and so in this case, we're looking at adopting the model ordinance that the D N R completed fairly recently. Um, that process will be, um, we'll be incorporating that into our, our overall ordinances with potentially some changes as, as you wish. Um, so, but we'll be coming back to the natural resource standards. And then finally, article four is use specific standards. Um, so this is if there is something within a zoning district that has a need to regulate it in greater detail, um, this is that set of standards. So it addresses things like um, community living situations, duplexes, um, vehicle use and how they can, can be stored on a site. um, vehicle use and how they can, can be stored on a site. Um, accessory uses. So if someone has, um, for example, one business type and they want to open a different business type in, in with them. So that is the, the crux of what that is. And so with that, that is the totality of the chapters that we've got. You know, a draft prepared for. Um, I did want to share with the commission these two slides. Um, so as part of the diagnostic step, the consultants went through and part of the, the goal of this effort is to um, consolidate and clarify a lot of the zoning that the city has because there's overlap and um, areas where the zoning and the language that describes that zoning creates duplication and um, lack of clarity, both for staff and for citizens. Uh, and so this is a representation of how those districts will be consolidated. Um, so I don't remember the number of districts that we have, but you can see the chart that they will, there'll be five districts when we're done um, for the residential standards unless you elect to change something. Um, and likewise with the other non-residential districts, they will be consolidated and clarified. So um, I'm happy to answer any questions that I can. And thank you for your attention.
The one thing that Ms. X didn't mention probably on purpose. One of the goals here, when the diagnostics was done, was to determine how we were doing with non-conforming uses in a particular zoning district and that proved to be a disaster, not the effort, but the fact that we had so many non-conforming uses in zoning districts. The rewrite works very hard at cleaning up most of them. Most is fair, right? Hold on a little.
Um, it looks like on number six, um, the council packet for one oh three is the page. Um, adoption and implementation is expected in twenty twenty three. So that's, we're still in this year. Um, I think it's important that instead of waiting to the um, well, okay, it's coming up very soon, but it says second semester next year. So, um, I think it's important rather than the council waiting for entire thing to get put on top of us that maybe if we had a committee, the whole meeting and we could walk through these a little bit more, um. I did notice some things when I was looking at the map in this that I saw where some inconsistencies, but given the heavy council agenda with the budget and all the things, I could not even possibly spend the amount of time on these four chapters as I would like to dedicate to. I'd also notice in public engagement under number two, there were several people that asked for a little more on public engagement. And I know you said these task force meetings. Are the task force meetings taking public input? Is there comment period? Okay, so, um.
Wait a minute.
What?
You asked a question.
Well, she shook her head. I saw her. Right. She's, she said no.
But it's not, that's, that's a pleasure of the, of the Plan Commission. And the Plan Commission has been very open to public comment. However, nobody showed up.
Okay.
So if you show up and you have a comment, it may, it only common sense that we would take the input on something that is this important. So so let's please not gloss over that. And let's also understand that there's there's, there's a lot of opportunity. After you get a document that you can comment on to comment on. Until you have a document to comment on, you're just talking.
I'm commenting right now. I have it the full.
I'm talking about I'm talking about the public, which is what you were addressing.
I asked.
You know, once again, you can stand up and say whatever you want. The facts are the facts. So
Here's a fact. Stakeholders interview that you conducted stakeholder interview. I would consider myself a pretty strong stakeholder. I did not get an interview. So not to toot my own horn here, but I spent more than eight and a half years on the Environmental Commission. And combined have over twenty three years working with our current U D O. And I used to be able to go top of the page, right hand side, second paragraph, down through sentence. Um, I haven't, um, had to deal with it quite that strongly as much anymore, um, but I would like to have a little bit more input when you get to the natural resource protection standards because I think I have some input that might be valuable. And I would like to share whatever I could, whether it's used or not. Fine. But, um, I did go over the entire U D O with Mr. Deedle when he was here and came up with some methods to work through that. I, I don't want to see the natural resource protection standards watered down too much. And I think I have a method that we could probably solve a lot of issues and I I'd like someone to reach out to me when we get to that point. I appreciate that. I wanted to make a motion that we have this on, um, a future committee of the whole for discussion, um, sometime before the end of the year or at least in January. That's my motion.
Think we've got another committee.
We think we have it in January. Yeah. Which one?
It's actually going to be February. Remember January is the new year. So we push it to February, the first.
That was the land clearing issue on February.
I don't remember what it was.
Special assessments.
Yeah, it was, well, the land clearing one that the mayor said he had some changes to as well. And he suggested that we change it to a, I don't remember what. I thought he said January, but.
So relative to the comment about stakeholders interviews, I can't account for if or why not, but I believe that each of the aldermen were approached for comments and interviews. No, no, I, I can't guarantee you, but I believe that was the case because that was our instructions.
I apologize. I don't remember the full list of stakeholders, but it did include the common council and business owners, developers, members of the community. So those interviews were not conducted by staff, though the consultants did it. So.
I never had a consultant reach out to me. I never had an email or any contact. So.
Okay, I will follow up and see.
Thank you.
So the, the purpose in the update today is to give you the document with the changes thus far. So that you do have time to read it, consider it. Uh, if you go through this, you know, this has got the special and conditional uses in it. This has got um, standards in it for housing, housing and lot sizes. This has got all the stuff that we talk about all the time. So read this, please carefully, and then we'll talk about it February first.
Okay. Was that a second to my motion?
Is there a second, all the one Wilhelm's motion for February, uh, committed all?
Second.
Hanneman. Okay. Um, on the motion, all the one Hanneman. But you can say what you guys.
Oh, we're not voting first before I say what I have to say.
Why don't you say what you gotta say?
Um, just a little follow up and reiteration. Anyone is welcome to come to these, um, U D O workshop sessions. And I think we're pretty casual and, um, kind of round table type discussion with these meetings. So, um, but I also want to make a point and correct me if I'm wrong, please, Marion. Um, we have a dedicated website towards the U D O rewrite project. And you can communicate with the, um, consultants through that portal. So if you have questions or you have suggestions, things that are important to you, you can just go directly there. And I believe write that in, um, for there to give them the input. So that is continuing and ongoing to my understanding. But yeah, I invite anybody to come along. It's fun.
And the next week is Thursday night. Nobody wants to watch Packers anymore, right? Miss X.
Um, thank you for that note, Alderwoman. And the, the website is still live. Um, of course, staff is happy to field questions from um, the council and the members of the public as well. But, um, what is very useful about the map is that there is a or I'm sorry, the website is that there is a map in it, um, which is an opportunity to provide comment. And I would ask members of the public to take a look. Um, it's currently linked on the planning section of the city website. Because there are opportunities to make comments on the map itself. And we've had um, not as much interaction with it as we would like. So it would be wonderful to get more feedback.
On the motion, all those in favor of, oh, on the barber, excuse me, sorry.
I know that I've been able to just follow up because I am interested in it. And not being part of the, the committee or anything, I have been able to sit in on these and to try to track what's going on on occasion. And it's very interesting to see how that's all come together and how it's all working together. There were a lot of questions raised as we went through this, a lot of discussion that, that came up saying, why are we doing this this way? And so the couple of sessions that I've had some part of, just as a listening person, I, I, you know, it, it's out there and available.
On the motion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Marion. Uh, G six is a staff direction to, for a neighborhood meeting already scheduled for December the seventh. Is there such a motion? All the woman will.
Policy requirement. I need a formal motion to direct staff. So that was, it was here. And I know there's people here that want to update. I know the council doesn't want to hear me speak, but I will give you as quick as update as I can. So um, I just want to let the residents know that when this came forward and it came to the council, I personally was expecting some really small changes to the drainage pipe, as you talked about. And the grant as um, put out would have notable woodland impacts if they do eight hundred and fifty feet of the creek. Um, and the, um, the recent creation of the two very large stormwater basins that significantly changed the landscape, I know was brought out. And that was done under a minor amendment. So our hope is that this wouldn't be a minor amendment. So it would become before the Plan Commission and the council. Uh, and that way it would get more input and you'd be able to come. Um, our February resolution that we passed, which I had noticed people in my formal letter um, was extremely broad and did not include updates or progress reports. Um, and I'm hearing that we would like to have a little bit more of that. And so one of the saving graces, I want to know for your residents that the council did make the amendment to the resolution that it would at least return to council before it's bid. Now, I know you want more before the design. But I think it's especially important to the residents that we better understand the grant before we moved into the design phase of the project. And I think that uh, that will impact, uh, the last remaining section of the secondary important middle corridor in this section. So it's really important that we look at that. So I'm looking forward to the neighborhood meeting. And a staff briefing prior to entering that neighborhood meeting would be appreciated. And, um, with that, I would like to move to direct staff to hold a neighborhood meeting related to the East Branch Thirty Fifth Street Grant Project on Wednesday, December seventh at six thirty P M. And if funded, to allow council comment on a concept review of the project prior to full design.
A second.
Uh, motion was made by Alderman Wilhelm, second by Alderman Eichmann, um, Alderman Hanneman.
Just a point of clarification, um, from the older woman. Um, as part of this motion, are you also directing that representatives from Route Pike Wind also be in attendance at that neighborhood meeting? They will. Okay, I just want.
I can explain. See, here we go again. We're calling it a project. Nothing exists on paper other than the authorization to go talk about it. So there is not a project yet, folks. But let's talk. Let's talk about this on the seventh. So somebody knocks on your door and says there's a project, say thank you very much. Invite them in, buy them a beer, but there is no project. Okay, on the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. G seven is the, the most important motion we'll do all year. A motion to approve twenty twenty three professional services agreement between the city of Franklin, Racine County to verify certified soil testers and site evaluation when needed.
Second.
Hold for and barber, Mr. City Attorney. Oh, come on. I, there has to be some issue with this. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries G eight, Mr. City Attorney. I'll do it before a motion.
Recommend to approve with technical corrections such as, um, in the standard form services contract. There are some bracketed items remaining at the start of section two. So it's a pick one of the bracketed items. Don't leave both in in brackets.
Okay, just.
Not to exceed mount, exceed amount.
That's correct. Just to be clear, because again, some things were said that were not accurate. This is, this is consulting services to, to take some of the workload on projects coming into the planning department that can be done by, in this case, a former employee who's very familiar with our Unified Development Ordinance. And acting as a staff member, not as acting as the department manager. Sure.
Um, there's a typo in the budget, personal fines. I think that should be funds. Is that correct?
Well, we can find that.
And the other thing is, Mayor, do you really want to be the one to administer that when we have it? Administrator, wouldn't that be the director administrations? Job to administer.
No, because I'm responsible for the planning department uh, by ordinance and it's my job.
By recent ordinance, and there's no other community I know where the mayor is the department head of the manage. But, but you want it, you want to take it on? Okay, I won't say anymore, but.
It's not a recent ordinance. It was two thousand, I want to say, no, I want to say it was two thousand and one when that ordinance changed. So anyway, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Any opposed? With the technical corrections by the mayor and staff. Second, who seconded that? Uh, element barber, excuse me. Alderman Barber did. The motion was made by Alderman Hope for and second by element barber. That's correct. We don't have a one on this one. Come on, it's our first meeting for crying out loud. Slack, please. I'm teeing off. G nine is approval of contract to go to contract cleaning services. Oh, all those in favor of the motion, G eight? Wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute. Am I getting ahead of myself? I, yeah, we did that.
The, the ones that you mentioned were from G seven. So when Karen was asking you who made the motion, she was ahead of us all. Cause there was no motion.
Well, okay, but we'll consider G eight taken care of, right? Cause we had them. No. So the motion was Hope for and Barber on the soil testing agreement. Okay, on the soil testing agreement contract.
Yeah, we're done with that. She doesn't have a motion for G eight, which is the one.
I'm getting there. I'm getting there. Come on. It's been a long day. Okay, on G eight. As the comments that I made, Alderman Hope for moves to approve.
Hear the, can we hear the motion? Cause there was some additions and changes and corrections.
Motion authorized consulting services agreement with Rayburn Consulting LLC, which is Nick Fuchs for general planning services utilizing twenty twenty two budgeted funds. Funds, a budgeted personnel funds, excuse me, thank you, with all of one Wilhelm's correction in the planning division budget and authorize the mayor to execute and administer the appropriate related contract. And subject to the technical corrections by the city attorney and staff.
Clarification. Does appropriate related contracts mean the one that's in here?
Yeah.
Or can't we just say, um, instead of, can we say as presented instead of the appropriate related as presented? With correct technical change.
We can delete the words, the appropriate related.
And so that would.
Uh, just delete the words appropriate and related.
Yes.
So that's fine. All those in favor of that motion? See, see, she's all right. No, this is good. This is, this is all good. This is, this is aces. Okay. All those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
It's always to take.
Motion carries. No, I always need to be kept in line. G nine, we haven't done yet. This is the change from a, a employee contract in the evening to a contracted cleaning service.
Motion to approve the professional service agreement with Dust Free Cleaning Services and for a five time per week service starting December first, twenty twenty two at a monthly cost of two thousand eight hundred and forty two and to authorize the direct administration to execute the agreement stated as directly out of council package.
Seconded by Alden Barber, Mr. City Attorney.
Ms. Director of Administration, will this be utilizing the standard form?
Yes, sir.
Services contract. Thank you.
All those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. G ten, uh, no, we're going to skip that one. We're going to skip that one for the moment. We move on to licenses. Who's doing it? Other owner handman.
Recommendations. Um, on tonight's agenda, our first item, Ryan Fuel LLC is hold. At the request of the applicant. Oh, sure. I'm sorry. Awesome. Sorry. Okay. So um, Ryan Fuel LLC is um, a hold at the request of the applicant. Um, applicant Bodat is approved. Dranowski approve. Uh, Casteven approve. Tangle is hold for appearance. These Zavarian missionaries approve. Grant request. Fleet Reserve Association Branch fourteen approve the grant request. Item number three, recommend approval of an ordinance to amend the municipal code. To update specified duties of the license committee as set forth in sub nineteen for a parent three license committee. With technical corrections for proper pagination. And item four, recommend. Pardon? Oh, I'm sorry. That was for I wrote it in the wrong place. Scratch technical corrections on. The recommendation for item three. Do you want those items taken separately, City Attorney? All right, then. So then I would move. The applications. As recommended from Ryan. Through Fleet Reserve Association Branch fourteen.
Second.
We're going to take the. Yes, but as as.
As.
As recommended, but we're just taking that group. Would you like me to review again? Okay, the first motion will be. Um, recommend to hold Ryan Fuel LLC at the request of the applicant. Yes. Yeah. And so reckon. Aye. Yes. That's my understanding. So are you asking, Mayor, that? Approvals are Badeau, Dranowski. Casteven. Zavarian missionaries. And Fleet Reserve. Well, we're going to do a separate motion for a hold for appearance. Aye. Okay. It's fine. Um. Hold, um, recommend hold for appearance. Applicant tingle. Aye.
Aye.
Move to approve. Or, okay.
With an update to the anticipation clause. To update the signature line on the attestation clause.
That's the next one.
All right. On the motion to update the municipal code with the change by the city attorney, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thanks for bearing with me on item. I know, on item four.
Um, the committee. Moves the approval of the adminis- license committee administrative rules and procedures amendments. With the technical corrections for pagination.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
The committee also calls a special. License committee meeting. For Monday, November twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-two at four P M. For the discussion and review of our fireworks ordinance.
Okay, that doesn't need a motion.
No.
Okay. Thank you very much for bearing with me. Appreciate it. Item I vouchers and payroll. Wait, wait, wait. And we gotta let Karen get caught up here. Okay, all right. Is there a motion approving city vouchers when any date of note? Is there a motion with uh, city vouchers ending date of November tenth, twenty twenty-two, the amount of two million, two hundred and ten thousand, five hundred and eighteen dollars eighty-one cents? And payroll dated November fourth, twenty twenty-two, in the amount of four hundred and twenty-nine thousand, three hundred and eleven dollars, seventy-three cents, and payments to various payroll deductions. In the amount of two hundred and thirty-two thousand, three hundred and one dollars, nineteen cents, plus city matching payments. An estimated payroll dated November eighteenth, in the amount of. Uh, estimated at four hundred and thirty-three thousand payments to various payroll deductions estimated at four hundred and sixty-six thousand, plus city matching payments. And estimated payroll for December the second, the day before our parade and tree lighting, and estimated at four hundred and thirty-one thousand and payments to various payroll deductions estimated at two hundred and thirty-seven thousand plus city match payments and approval to release city. Library vouchers not to exceed twenty-five thousand dollars. Matt, wait, wait. Madam Director of Finance.
Should have been at your places tonight.
Madam Director, could you read the?
Approval to process check payment for two hundred and eighty-five dollars to Fairy Tail Birthday Company LLC. This is for that parade.
Move, don't move.
Barber. And like man. And now Madam Clerk, call the role. When you're ready.
Alderman Nelson?
Aye.
Alderman Barber?
Aye.
Alderwoman Hanneman?
Aye.
Alderwoman Wilhelm? Alderwoman Eichmann?
Aye.
Alderman Holfer?
Aye.
Motion carries six eyes, no nose, no absent, no abstention. Back to. Um, let's. Now, do that because there are some of us who are leaving permanently on that one. So uh, G ten, I appreciate the suggestion, but. If we're leaving, we're leaving. Thank you. Denise. Uh, G ten, is there a close, uh, motion enter closed session pursuant to section Wisconsin says nineteen eighty-five five one to be for competitive and bargaining reasons to deliberate and consider terms. Related to tax incremental list, number eight, potential development agreement. Between the City of Franklin and Supudo Cheese USA Inc., commercial manufacturing, building mixed use development. Uh, public and private improvements and investing in public funds and government actions in relation thereto. And to affect such development, including terms and provisions of the potential development agreement for the development of property located at twenty-eight ninety-five West Oakwood Road, approximately thirty-four point three eight eight acres and reenter open session. Same place thereafter to act on such matters and discuss therein as it seems appropriate.
Second.
Let's do a hold for an Eichmann. Madam Clerk, we need a roll call.
Alderman Holfer? Alderwoman Eichmann? Alderwoman Wilhelm? Alderwoman Hanneman?
Aye.
Alderman Barber?
Aye.
Alderman Nelson?
Uh, motion carries six eyes, no nose, no absent, no abstentions. We will end our streaming. And I don't anticipate going back into streaming as we come out, so thank you for watching at home. And sir, we're going to go into executive session of the specific personnel problems or the investigation of charges against specific persons. Except where paragraph B applies, which if discussed in public would likely have substantial adverse impact. Adverse effect upon the reputation of persons discussed. Refer to. In such histories or data or involved in such problems or investigations, the reenter open session, the same place thereafter to act on such matters. Discussed here therein as deemed appropriate. And Hanneman and Eichmann. Madam Clerk, we need a roll call, please, and the traditionals. You go back. But you don't have.
Aye.
Alderwoman Wilhelm?
Aye.
Alderwoman Eichmann?
Aye.
Alderman help, Alderman Holfer?
Aye. Motion carries six eyes, no nose, no absent, no abstentions. For the record, Attorney Riley is joining us. We recording?
We're in open.
Not yet. It's eleven oh seven. We are back in open session. Is there a motion to uh, to? Accept the letters as presented in. Mr. City Attorney.
Motion to process the complaints. As discussed in closed session.
There's such a motion. Nelson and Eichmann. Madam Clerk, let's call a roll on this, please.
Okay.
Sure.
Alderman Holfer?
Aye.
Alderwoman Eichmann?
Aye.
Alderwoman Wilhelm?
Aye.
Alderwoman Hanneman?
Aye.
Alderman Barber?
Abstain.
Alderman Nelson?
No, I don't think it's appropriate. I I don't think it's necessary, but if you did, you did.
Well, you have it. You did abstain. I don't know.
No, it's a universal motion dealing with the whole group of matters, not. She she was not participant in her closed session. Neither was Alderman Barber, so I believe it's appropriate for them to vote because it involves other issues not, and they're not aware of their own.
Okay, I appreciate your clarification.
For that matter.
Well, thank you.
Okay, so what's your vote?
I abstain because I'm a principal.
No, that's that's fine. I just wanted to clarify it. So the motion carries five eyes. No nose.
Eyes.
No absent and one abstention. Motion carries. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Hope for Nelson. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Congratulations, Karen, on your first name.
We get, they get long.